Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 7th meeting of the Berea Board of Education. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Here.
Mrs. Ferris?
Here.
Mr. Docman?
Here.
Mr. Postal?
Here.
Mrs. Zirke?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our motto here at the Berea City Schools is that we are a community of excellence, integrity, and purpose. And our vision is a diverse community dedicated to inspiring lives of character, learning, leadership, and service. We are going to flip-flop letter B and C in our agenda just to have our student recognition first, and then we'll have public participation. So first, we have some Eagle Scouts to recognize. When I call your name, gentlemen, if you're here, if you could please come up to that microphone over there. Matthew Bachi. Alex Kovac. Matthew Moss. Ian Taylor. Sorry, you're so far away, but now that we livestream all of our meetings, we have to do everything by a microphone. So hopefully, is that one on, Vicki? Okay. So, Matthew, tell us, you're a senior, right?
Yes.
Okay, what are your plans for next year?
Next year, I plan on attending John Carroll and pursuing a degree in exercise science.
Oh, awesome. What about your Eagle project? What was that about?
My Eagle project was a storage caddy for a second-grade teacher, Ms. Pisens, in the district. Basically, a storage caddy for all of her books and the school materials that she needed.
Yeah, teachers like to hoard stuff. So I'm sure she appreciated that.
Yeah.
Was she your second-grade teacher?
Yes, she was.
That's very sweet. I know Mr. Duke used to be on our board until just a couple of months ago, and he would always ask our Eagle Scouts what your favorite badge was.
My favorite badge?
Yes.
Funny, mine would actually be mammal studies, and, because there's a funny story upon it. Because it was my first, it was my first summer camp, and I didn't really know. And I was signing up for merit badges really fast, and I actually thought it was mammoth study. So I, as a 13-year-old, I'm like, oh, mammoth study actually sounds fun. Gets the merit badge, it's a mammal study. It's kind of fun.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Matthew. We have another Matthew. Matthew Moss, are you a senior also?
No, I'm a junior.
Oh, you're a junior, all right. What was your Eagle Scout about, your project?
Cleaning trees and building a ramp for the memorial garden.
Did you do that all by yourself, or did you have some help? Who helped you out?
Some Eagle Scouts.
That's great. And what was your favorite merit badge?
Fire safety.
How come?
I don't know.
So, Matthew, tell, tell the group why you chose your project at the Memorial Garden at the new BPE. There's a, there's a reason why you chose that, right?
I used to be on the garden club, and I wanted to help them.
Oh, well, thank you. I know that garden club is really, was really special at Brook Park Memorial, and we're so glad we were able to continue that. Thank you, Matthew. Ian, you're a senior.
Yes, I am.
Yes. And what are you doing next year?
So, in July, I will be moving to Kings Point, New York, to attend the United States Merchant Marine Academy.
Awesome. And what was your Eagle project?
So, my Eagle project was with Berea Mid Park Middle School, working to build a sensory room, which is a room for students who sometimes have certain learning sensory needs, can go and get the stimulation they need. So, we built that in the fifth and sixth grade, sixth, sorry, fifth and sixth-grade wing, which is kind of towards, I want to say Sandal Haven, so that side.
All right. And your mom's a special ed teacher, so I'm sure that was very special to her, right? She's over there trying not to cry. And what was your favorite merit badge?
Well, I think with going to the Merchant Marine Academy, I'd probably have to say small boat sailing, so.
Now, I know you took a trip, a sailing trip, a summer ago or something. Were any of these guys on there with you?
I don't think so, no. But, yeah, I, it was probably about three years now, because it would have been going into my freshman year.
Oh, yeah, pre-COVID.
Yeah, I got to go live on a 42-foot schooner sailboat and sail the Florida Keys with Scouts BSA's High Adventure Program. So I got to do some snorkeling and some coral reefs and live on a boat with a Transylvanian captain, so. That was interesting, but it was just a great experience that really, I think, led me to where I plan on going for college also.
Well, gentlemen, congratulations. I know I was doing some research on Eagle Scouts, and only about 4% of all boys that enter Scouts ever make it to this rank. So that's an incredible achievement. We are very proud of you, and you represent the Berea schools so well. We wish you well in all your future endeavors. Continuing on with impressive students, Fiona Kanzig, are you here? Yep, there she comes. You may have read an article in Cleveland.com about Fiona. She is with her little, with her hard hat on from Polaris. And Fiona was honored as a Presidential Scholar, which is an honor that only goes to 161 students in the entire country. So congratulations, Fiona. Will you tell us a little bit about the award and just what you're doing with Hammond Construction and what you do at Polaris?
Yeah, so I am a senior in the Construction Trades Program at Polaris Career Center. I am also a CCP student, so I take college classes during the day instead of coming here. I am a project engineer intern at Hammond Construction, so I am stationed on a high school that's being built in Akron. With the support of my Polaris teachers and counselors, I was applied for the National Presidential Scholarship, and I'm now moving on to the next phase. So Thursday, I will be going to the Ohio Meeting in Columbus, and then I'll start working on that 16-hour application process pretty soon.
So what kinds of things do you do over at Hammond?
So, we spend a lot of time reviewing blueprints, making sure that everything's being built according to codes and the plans and the design intent of the building. I help with a lot of paperwork, so I write RFIs, which are the requests for information. So if blueprints are unclear, we make sure that, we speak to the architects to make sure that everything's being built correctly. Then we have to do submittals, so we make sure that all the products are the products that they're meant to be according to the specifications of the building.
Do you ever catch anything that's not correct?
Several times. We're at almost 700 RFIs right now.
Wow. And you're going to Kent State next year?
Yes, I'll be going to Kent State University for Construction Management.
Wow, that's impressive. We should have, we should have known about her a few years ago when we were working on this school. Yeah, you probably would have caught some things we didn't. Did you always know that you wanted to be part of that program at Polaris?
No, I, my parents really wanted me to take the opportunity of going to Polaris, and construction piqued my interest, so I just decided to go for it, and I ended up falling in love with it.
That's incredible.
Thank you.
And I have to ask, are there a lot of other women involved in this program?
We had one last year, but this year, I'm the only girl in the class.
You go, girl.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have, one of our retired teachers actually loves this school district so much that she wanted to come back. Her name is Cindy Millen, and she taught fourth grade at Grindstone forever. And before that, she was also at River Edge forever. And she's quite the celebrity in town. She lives in Berea, and pretty much, if you ever see her anywhere, there's always little children following. And, like now. So these kids aren't even her students this year, they're all fifth graders this year. But Mrs. Millen wanted to come and share something special that they did last year, but didn't come into fruition until just a few months ago.
Right, right. Thank you very much, Mrs. Chapman. Thank you, Board of Education and members of the community. We are really excited to be here, and maybe you kind of sense the excitement. I'm excited to see them, because we haven't all been together since the end of the school year last year, and they've grown, and they're excited to see each other. And the reason we're here is because last year, at the end of the year, we decided to take on a project of writing a book. And I remember when I started talking to the students about doing this, I told them it is going to be a huge undertaking, it's going to be a lot of work, and they all said, let's go for it, and they were really excited. And we spent some time trying to decide what we were going to write our book about. And we didn't really come to a consensus, but everybody had their own story that they wanted to share. So that's exactly what we did. We wrote a book. It's called A Collection of Short Stories Long on Love, Logic, and Laughter. And so when you read this book, it, first of all, is informative. Some of our students wrote informative essays. There's laughter. You'll learn some lessons in here, some things that maybe you didn't think about doing before. And lots and lots of love in this book. So, we are presenting a book to Grindstone Libraries, so that everybody at Grindstone can enjoy it, and also to the middle school libraries. So I have two copies here that I would like to present to the Board of Education, and then we'll figure out how to make sure those libraries get the books. Now, we are real good about speaking into microphones, aren't we? We have one in, had one in the classroom, we had a lot of fun with it. So.
I don't think it goes very far, so just be careful.
They're going to have to come up here.
Yeah.
Yes. And I'll just hold it, and then they can speak into it. Is that good?
Sure.
Each of the students is going to take a minute to introduce themselves, and then just say a sentence or two about their story. Are you ready, Sophia? Why don't you come around here to the front?
Hi, my name is Sophia Little, and I wrote a do, a story about my dog, Maggie.
And that was one of the stories, definitely about love, for sure.
My name is Kendall Limes. I wrote a story about a day with Thing One and Thing Two. So there's a lot of laughter in that, even in the picture.
Yes, and I forgot to mention that the students all did their own illustrations too. So it is illustrated by each student, and they helped each other with the illustrations. They were very helpful.
Hi, I'm Isabella Comstock, and I wrote a story about a magical stick.
I don't really know how to word this, but I basically made a story about the muff, the muffin man, except he, he's basically had a rough day. And now he has to pay for a new window. My name's Augie, by the way. I'm sorry, this wasn't a good presentation, I did my best.
Oh, you did great, Augie. And your story was one, yes, we had a lot of laughter with.
Hi, my name's Elena Anderson, and I wrote a story about my, like, personal life, I guess.
Another story about a lot of love. Thank you, Elena.
Hello, my name's Carolyn, and I wrote my story about my old bunny hoppers.
A love story.
My name is Cole Plata, and I wrote a story about a crow and a scarecrow trying to be friends. It really doesn't have any thought-provoking re, sin on it, but I really think you should re it, because it makes no sense, and that's why it's funny.
Actually, it was a nice twist on a very familiar fairy tale. Nice job.
Hi, my name is Eva Gasing, and I wrote a story about writer's block.
Hi, my name is Leona Duz, and I wrote about a story, When Three Kids Go Missing on an Island.
Yes, and I have to say that we, this project went through to the summer too, because we didn't get done, and so students even worked on the summer. And then I was able to collect their stories and, and put it all together, so that's, that's why it took a little bit of time to get it published.
Hi, my name is Jack Chris, and I wrote a story about when my family went to Puerto Rico.
Hi, my name is Logan Crack, and I wrote a story about three, three friends that took a journey to space.
Thank you, Logan, nice job.
Hi, I'm Luke Jackman, and I wrote a story about a black hole.
Hi, I'm Cole Jelenik, and I wrote a horror story about a camp.
Hi, I'm, hi, I'm Taylor Sanyak, and I wrote a story about my parents letting me cook, and it was a disaster.
And they never let her cook again, and so she felt like that lesson learned there, she didn't have to cook anymore.
Hello, my name is Lillian Little, and I wrote a story about the adventures of Thing One and Thing Two.
Hi, I'm Riley Richards, and I wrote about a time I lost my dog.
And the dog was found, right, Riley?
That was my question.
Yes. Happy ending.
Hi, my name's Simon M. I wrote a, a story about a book report about Ohio.
Yes, one of our informative stories. I am so proud of all of you, and I want to publicly say that. You did an amazing job. And if you're wondering about the book, it will be at two of the libraries, and they're going to have one at Cuyahoga County Library too, so you can check it out and enjoy all their wonderful stories. Thank you very much for having us here tonight, most appreciated.
And Mrs. Millen, I just, I hope you realize that this is a tribute to you as well, that so many kids would want to come back when they're not even in your class this year, and show off the, the hard work that they did. So thank you for everything.
Well, it's a, it's a perfect opportunity for me to thank Berea City Schools for the opportunity to teach here. I taught for 38 years, and 31 of those years were here on Berea, and I just had an amazing career, and I thank the school district and the community for all the love and support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we have one of our current seniors, Christina Yates. I found out about Christina on Friday. I was, you know, on Facebook, as we all are, and I saw an article on Cleveland.com about her, and she created a website preserving Berea High School's history, which is a huge undertaking. So I emailed her over the weekend, we got in touch, and she was free, and she was able to come today to tell us about why she did this and to share some information with us. So Christina, can you come on up? She asked me if she could bring the bricks, and I told her, you can bring whatever you want.
Hello, my name is Christina Yates, and before I begin with this, I would just like to say that Mrs. Millen was my teacher when I was in the fourth grade. And if it weren't for Ms. Millen, I wouldn't have the love of rabbits that I currently have, because when I was in the fourth grade, she had two rabbits, Digger and Snowball. And I remember, over Christmas break, I got to take care of Digger, and I got my little rabbit, Snowflake. She sadly passed away, rest in peace, Snowflake. But just the fact that I was able to take care of a rabbit when I had my rabbit, and the fact that I had all this prior knowledge as to how to take care of a rabbit, that has helped me to take care of my current rabbit, Button. So, again, a really big thank you to Mrs. Millen for my extensive love of rabbits. Okay, so now going on as to why I am here. So, as Ms. Chapman said, I created a website called Berea High Archive. So, I, I have a little paper here. So, Berea High Archive is a website dedicated to Berea High School. It has photos of every area of the school, brick pictures, and a 25-minute video titled The Final Goodbye. The website idea came on February 20th, 2020, when, what, at a parent-teacher conference. My amazing, wonderful father, who is at home right now, Jerome Yates, and I finished up our very first parent, parent-teacher conference, and we had around 30 minutes until the next one. And he saw that we were the only ones in a hallway that we were in, the 100th Hallway, so that's right by the math area, if you guys all remember the school. And he suggested that I take a photo of it with my iPad, because I always carried around an iPad. And so, when I asked him why, like, why, why should I? He told me that it would be a really good way to remember the school when it got demolished. Oh, wow, there we go. You can start with hallways if you want, and then just move on, I guess. Wow. I had no idea about this. Okay. When I asked why I should, he told me that it could be a good way to remember the school when it got demolished. That quickly led me to think of my mom, the wonderful, amazing, most supportive mom in the world, Johanna Kryakowski. She is sadly moderately disabled, and I had no idea if she committed to the building again, because it's very hard for her to go anywhere, because she has back problems and neck problems and arthritis everywhere, and it, it takes a toll on her body to go out anywhere. And so I thought, hey, why not take a picture of this hallway for her? I don't know. I, I, so I did. And then we entered another hallway, and we took a photo of that, and that sort of went on and on and on for that half hour, and we were even able to sneak into the auditorium to snap a few. Oh, wow, there we go. When I took those photos to show my wonderful, amazing mom, she began to cry and told me how much she appreciated it. That led me to think about other alumni who might feel the same way my mom did. Maybe they were out of town, maybe, maybe they're old in a nursing home, maybe they're in the military. They wouldn't be able to see the school one last time, so I thought, hey, what about this website, you know? And so, from February 21st until around March 13th or so, I didn't think too much about my little idea until the wonderful, amazing thing called COVID happened. I had no idea that March 12th, 2020, was the last time that I, or any of us, would enter that high school as a functioning school one last time. And so during the quarantine, you know, I, I began researching and just, you know, just looking at old yearbooks on classmates.com, interacting with, you know, alumni. In my particular family, I have a lot of ties to Berea High from my great-grandmother, Rose Kennedy, rest in peace. She was the oldest living graduate, class of 1936, followed by my grandmother, Nancy Bach, who was a graduate from 1960, I'm going to say, and then followed by various aunts, uncles, cousins, even the assistant superintendent of the school. even the assistant superintendent of the school now, Mike Draves. His wife, Mary Draves, was a graduate of the high school. So like I was saying, I began to learn about Berea High School on my own using various resources like yearbooks and articles. I grew more in love with the school as time drew on, all the way up to May 19th, when a website for alumni, which I called Berea High Archive, began in the early phases, just pretty much outlining, using Google Sites, because that was a free and easy way to, you know, make a website. I had no knowledge in making a website at that time. And then June 7th, I knew was the final open house for the school and I began to get really excited because, oh boy, I get to go wherever I want in the school. I can take all these beautiful photos of the school. It's gonna be great. And then I found out that you could only go one particular way, one way only. Some areas weren't open, some areas were closed. And so I thought, oh no, I really need to fix this. We need, yeah, we just need to get photos of every single nothing tranny of this high school because this is the last time I'm gonna be in it. Why not? So I contacted the wonderful, amazing principal, Dr. March Smith-Burger, who granted me full access to the school. I could go anywhere I wanted. I could go the opposite way of other alumni. I could, you know, jump over barriers and crawl under security guards and... Yeah, so... So on June 8th, I finished the website, which... I'm so sorry. So on June 8th, I finished the website as much as it could be. The video called "The Final Goodbye" stemmed roughly around the same time as the website. In fact, I was actually thinking of doing a video of the school before even thinking of the website. However, due to, you know, the COVID and the one-way through the hallways and special markers on the floors, I could not do that because, seriously, who wants to see a video of me jumping over barriers, crawling under security guards? Yeah, nobody wants to see that. And then after that, whoops. There we go. At the very end of my video, if any of you have watched it, there is a singing of the alma mater, which I found on a YouTube video. Just some random rinky-dink YouTube video, had about, I think, 100 views. So I thought, hey, you know, why not use this? I mean, it's free, it's on YouTube, you know, free, it's free. So, um... Yeah. God dang it, my phone keeps on closing and I don't know why. I'm so sorry about this. So June 10th, the video was complete. First month, it was up. I got around 200 views, but it really went up after the demolition. Now, as you guys can probably see on the website, there are no videos, no photos of demolition. I feel like that would have been really hard for alumni to see because, you know, why would I make a website about a big, beautiful building and show video of a big, beautiful building and walking through a big, beautiful building and then watching photos of the demolition of the big, beautiful building? No, that is definitely not my intention. And so those photos and videos are currently on my Instagram, @bereahhigharchive. And so during the demolition, I went every single day... Bah, I got spit in my mouth. And so I went to the demolition every day and, you know, at the time, you know, first day of demolition, I'm like, you know what? I'm gonna make a really lofty goal. I'm gonna try and get a brick from every single part of this high school because alumni deserve it. Alumni deserve to see a brick from every single part of their school, even if they don't get a brick. So, you know, first day, I'm riding my little three-wheeled bike up to the demolition site and I asked this wonderful, amazing construction worker, "Hey, can I have a brick from the sports center?" He very graciously gave me one. And I'm like, "Okay, okay. Can I also have one from the pool?" And he's like, "Okay, yeah, go ahead." And then two weeks later, the 70s edition got torn down. I'm like, "Hey, can I have a brick from that section over there?" And they're like, "Yeah, go right ahead." And I actually gave Mary Draves, a teacher at Berea Mid Park High School. She's right there. I gave her a brick from her classroom, room 155, because I knew that, you know, Berea High School and especially that classroom was so important to her during her 20-plus years of teaching. I think 20-plus years, I'm not too sure how long. And, you know, I just continued to get bricks from all these different areas and in fact, I have a representation of one of my bricks here. This is from the clock tower. I don't know if everybody can see this or not. People at home, there you go. So yeah, this is from the clock tower. I received this on November 13th. And then along with this, in the evening, I received I received a piece of sandstone from the clock tower and I think that I am the only person to have a piece of sandstone from the clock tower. Yep, it is an indie Berea sandstone. Thank you to whoever shouted that out. I don't know. And so from... Yeah. I would say iffy, but whatever. Moving on. So we, um... So then I thought, you know, hey, I did one school, I really had a fun time with it. Why not do another school? So I chose to do Mid Park High School, which is currently Berea Mid Park Middle School. And I went up to Dr. Smith-Burger and I said, "Hey, I really wanted to do Mid Park High School. Can I please do Mid Park High School? Can you get me in contact with the principal who can do Mid Park High School?" And so I got in contact with Mr. Nick De Senza, which is the current principal there. And he gave me full, unaudited access of the school. I did not have to jump over barriers or crawl under security guards. And so I did a full 28-minute video on Mid Park High called, oh gosh, what did I name it? I don't remember. It's on Mid Park High Archive. You'll see it on Berea High Archive. I see the board laughing.
We think you're great. You're great, Christina.
Aw, thank you so much. Thank you. I really appreciate the fact that I'm able to come here today and speak about this. And also, I would like to just shout out just a couple people who helped me with like, information and stuff, if that's okay, Ms. Board President?
Of course.
Okay, so of course, we have my wonderful, beautiful, talented, amazing Jerome Yates, who helped me do a little bit of Photoshop magic on some of the photos. You may give him a round of applause. There you go, Dad. There's your applause. I hope you're happy with it. And then also, while we're on this topic of family, my amazing, wonderful, biggest supporter, Johanna Kwiatkowski. Round of applause, please. Yeah, and then also the current president of the Historical Society, Mr. Dennis Kusztak. Round of applause, please. And then I also want to thank Dr. March Smith-Burger. Round of applause, please. And Mr. Nick De Senza for giving me access to Mid Park. Round of applause. And I also want to give a very special thanks to Ms. Linda Kramer, who wrote my article on Berea High Archive and Mid Park High Archive. Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. And then I just now had a meeting with the Mid Park Legacy Facebook page people and their names, well, they're going to help me a lot, so I'm going to shout them out. Ms. Nancy Rilo and Mr. John Silva. And of course, I would also like to shout out another one of my biggest supporters, Ms. Dawn Rubensall, for always just like, supporting me, believing in me. And then finally, I'd just like to shout out every single alumni member, far and wide. I don't know where you are, but, you know, round of applause for all of them. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much, Ms. Chapman.
Christina, you are awesome. You're just incredible. Your smile is infectious. We can, I mean, we can tell how much love you put into this project and the fact that you took it on your own just because you wanted to is just, it's amazing.
Yeah, and like, if there's any possible way that like, I could like, integrate like Berea High Archive or Mid Park High Archive into the current Berea Mid Park High School and just like, give these kids some sort of like, a history lesson as to like, where they come from and like, what like, their, like, because this this school district has been around for like, 150 years. I mean, that's crazy. That's insane. Like, these kids, you know, right now, like, I would say about a good 25% don't really know what to do, like, they don't care about the fact that like, they're part of a legacy. They're, like, they just want to move on, get whatever grade they get, and forget about school for the rest of their lives. And then, you know, years on in the future, you know, they're gonna want to look back and say, "Hey, those were some pretty good times." Yeah, so, yeah.
And students like Christina and Fiona and Matthew and Matthew and Ian and all those 5th graders are why we all do what we do. All right, public participation. Oh. My bad. Can we do one more thing before public participation? These other kids have been sitting very patiently. We have a presentation tonight from our middle school and these are also students, and this is about our new ROCKS program. Mrs. Getz and friends. They're shy. We've all been in middle school. We understand.
Good evening. I am Lori Getz, one of the school counselors at the middle school. And we just want to talk a little bit about our new program called ROCKS, Ruling Our Experiences. We're gonna start with this video and then we will proceed.
Hi, Erin.
Hi.
Okay, so I'm gonna just give you some actions to do and just do the first thing that comes to mind. Show me what it looks like to run like a girl.
Hair.
Show me what it looks like to fight like a girl. Now throw like a girl.
Aww.
My name is Dakota and I'm 10 years old.
Show me what it looks like to run like a girl. Throw like a girl. Fight like a girl. What does it mean to you when I say "run like a girl"?
It means run fast as you can.
So do you think you just insulted your sister?
No. I mean, yeah, insulted girls, but not my sister.
Is like a girl a good thing?
Actually, I don't know what it really, if it's a bad thing or a good thing. It sounds like a bad thing. Sounds like you're trying to humiliate someone.
So when they're in that vulnerable time, between 10 and 12, how do you think it affects them when somebody uses like a girl as an insult?
I think it definitely drops their self-confidence and really puts them down because during that time, they're already trying to figure themselves out. And when somebody says, "You hit like a girl," it's like, well, what does that mean? Because they think they're a strong person. It's kind of like telling them that they're weak and they're not as good as them.
And what advice do you have to young girls who are told they run like a girl, kick like a girl, hit like a girl, swim like a girl?
Keep doing it because it's working. If somebody else says that running like a girl, or kicking like a girl, or shooting like a girl is something that you shouldn't be doing, that's their problem. Because if you're still scoring and you're still getting to the ball on time and you're still being first, you're doing it right. Doesn't matter what they say. I mean, yes, I kick like a girl and I swim like a girl and I walk like a girl and I wake up in the morning like a girl because I am a girl. And that is not something that I should be ashamed of, so I'm gonna do it anyway. That's what they should do.
If I asked you to run like a girl now, would you do it differently?
I would run like myself.
Would you like a chance to redo it?
Why can't run like a girl also mean win the race?
So with this, we had this organization, this idea brought to us at the middle school. And it was before COVID and we were contemplating and wanting to put it into place. And then, of course, we know what happened. We wanted to run it with some fidelity and have it actually, you know, take root. So we had waited. So this is our first inaugural year. We have eight staff members who are ROCKS leaders of small groups. We have over 100 girls who have chosen to participate. We have focused on 7th grade for a variety of reasons. Different grades have different things going on, so we have started there. And it has been a great first year. We're learning a lot. But we definitely have seen some wonderful things come from it to start.
And one of the things that we did is show them that video and show them how important we feel like it is to put this program in place. And Sophia, switch to the next slide. Thank you. So this is an evidence-based program. They did a lot of research with girls from the ages of 5th to 12th grade. And they found that confidence levels plummet from 5th to 9th grade. And unfortunately, we know confidence is so important for girls. One of the other statistics that kind of touched me... One of the other statistics that kind of touched me was that one in three girls with a GPA over 4.0 felt like they didn't have enough, they weren't smart enough, they didn't have enough confidence to go after their dream career. And so to us, this was really important because we thought, we want our girls to be confident. We want our girls to feel comfortable in their skin. We want them to be leaders. We want them to, you know, do the best and dream, you know, do, do everything that they dream of doing. Um, so we were really excited, and we learned about this program. And I was happy because these are my girls. These are my seventh grade girls. So I was super happy that they would have the opportunity to participate in Rocks. So today, it's one thing for us to talk about it. It's another thing for us to bring some rock stars. And they're gonna talk a little bit about what they learned and what was important to them. So if you want to switch to the next slide for me. First, we have Hannah Cunningham. Come on, girl.
This year, Rocks has shown me that standards and boundaries set by social media personalities are not realistic. It taught me that I need to be confident in myself, and it showed me the ways to do that. Social media shows these girls with heavy makeup, skinny bodies, and filters. Rocks helped me and other girls understand that that is not a realistic standard, and that is, that it is not okay to not fit into the traits of being a girl that you see online. Rocks helps girls my age struggling with body image or self-confidence improve mentally, and they do it in a great way. Rocks has really helped me and my classmates this year really just understand how girls in our age and our generation are being put down, people online, people in school, at work, in any setting, really. And this program has just really, like, changed the way that some of our girls think about themselves. And it's just really important, and this program is very important.
All right, next we have Ariana Mack.
Rocks taught me how to be assertive in my words and actions. I learned how to show confidence through body language. I now know how to use the I feel, when you, because I statements. Rocks became a safe place for us to meet other girls and talk about some of the issues that come with being one. I believe that Rocks could help girls turn into strong women.
All right, Mariah Mombara.
Hi, my name is Mariah, and, um, Rocks really helps me when it comes to being around other people and, um, talking to people because I was new at the school, and I was able to join this program that really helps me be around other girls and it helped me express myself. And it really meant a lot to me because one of my favorite topics was the self-defense. And I learned those self-defense tactics and everything that we learned so that if I was ever in a situation where I have to use them, it was very helpful to me, especially being a young girl and with the things that happen to girls nowadays. And I really appreciate it, and I really hope that we're able to continue this program, and thank you for this opportunity.
So again, this is just one of the small groups that, um, we're running. And again, we're hoping that it will continue to go strong year after year. Um, and I will say, one of the main questions that always is asked, whether we were in training or, um, from other adults, is, what about the boys? What about the boys? Well, we love the boys too, but there's not been anyone who has gone and done all the years of research and come up and created an evidence-based program. Um, so if any of you want to go ahead and do that, please feel free. Um, and school counselors would, you know, be welcome to do that too. This is just one of the small groups that, uh, we do. But Rocks has, um, been wonderful. We have some girls who are like, can we continue? Can we make it a club after school? We want to keep going with this. So we're just gonna keep at it, and hopefully, um, you know, we'll keep having the interest. And when the interest is there, we'll, we'll run it for the girls. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ladies, thank you very much for coming and speaking.
So just to kind of piggyback on some of the things that Ms. Getz said is that this program, I think, when I had introduced it to, and kudos to the middle school, was guidance counselors, some of our school psychs, some of our student family support specialists, who all willingly, very willingly engaged in the training that they had to go through to actually be able to implement this program. So I thank you guys, because without you, you wouldn't be doing these awesome things for these girls. So thank you so much to you. One, so yes. Uh, and it, and it fits very well into what they're doing in the middle school. One of the things I have said to them, what my goal would be that every girl that comes through the district eventually, um, by the time they graduate from high school, have some kind of participation in this program. So starting at the middle school, there is a part two. So, you know, the girl's asking, can we do this again? There's a part two for high school. I haven't talked to high school folks yet about this, but, um, I, and I think Mr. De Senza could talk about it. We've just seen kind of a change in, in some of our, in some of our girls with the program and what they've been doing just throughout the course of this one group starting through. So second group, couple hundred more girls in, in the second semester?
Um, I was gonna say, I'm wondering, but it's a smaller amount for second semester or is it a bigger portion for first semester?
Okay, yeah. But again, thank you to you guys. Without you and your commitment to this program, we know that it wouldn't be anything of what it is right now. So we really appreciate, appreciate everything that you've done to actually make this become a reality for our girls. So thank you.
Yes. Girls, you don't have to stay if you don't want, I mean, you're welcome to, but... Okay, our first speaker is Len Mavor.
Hi, everybody. That is a great program. I'm glad to see that with the Rocks because I do agree with that, that girls really do have issues with their self-confidence and self-esteem. So that's a really nice program. I'm glad to hear that. And it's nice to see a lot of you, familiar faces. Um, I do want to talk about something that I found a little disturbing recently. On social media, there were some comments made about, uh, board members and, uh, um, especially, I think pertaining to the Jedi program. And I feel like we need to practice what we preach because the board, when someone has a different opinion, a different idea, unless they agree with the majority, you're kind of shut off. It's like, we don't want to hear it, or we hear it, but it's not okay. You got to agree with us. So we're not using the greatest resource that we have. Bringing in an outside program might sound great at first, but the greatest resource you have is sitting right there. And in every building, every day, it's called your staff. It's called your support staff. Those people, and I can tell you this from experience, if you ask those staff members to brainstorm and find a way to help our students, they will get the job done. They can do that because they know the students. Other than the parents, teachers know those students better than anybody, other than their family, because nobody knows students like their family. So I can tell you also from experience that we have worked, I, I'm retired from the district, but the staff still, I can guarantee you, without even being in the buildings every day, work to accommodate every student's needs. I don't care what it is, whether it's an autistic child, a Down's child, a child in a wheelchair, mental health issues which are rampant in our buildings. Those are the ones you don't see. You think you don't see them because it's the silent one. And I can tell you from experience, that's a hell to go through for those students and their families. But I can tell you that everybody in these buildings, they're not here to get rich. They're here because they care about students, and they accommodate. We have found ways to accommodate every kind of need when it came to gender, special need, whatever it was. We found a way. We didn't need someone coming in and telling us that. I'm not saying that there's not work to be done. I'm not saying that it's not good to get together and have meetings, but let's use the resources that we have, our staff.
Thank you. Next is Jennifer Roach.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jennifer Roach, and I'm a proud public school teacher for the Berea City School Public School District. According to the Ohio School Board's Association Code of Ethics, as a school board member, the first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of all students attending public schools. Here in the Berea City Public School District, we have a mayor from Brook Park, one of the three communities in our public school district, that would like to make a formal proclamation quoting, "Recognizing the value of school choice." I don't know. I'm so nervous, sorry. "Because," and I quote, "standardized test scores have dropped, and because our public school district chooses to implement restorative justice programs and affirmative action equity programs." As a response to this proclamation announcement, one of our own board members responded with these words. "I agree with the mayor. Competition is good. Choice will make public schools better," emphasis his, "the way a free market capitalist, capitalist society is supposed to work. The definition of a free market is an economic system in which prices are determined by unrestricted competition between privately owned businesses. And a capitalist society features private ownership, profit, minimal government interference, and competition. So I read those words of support for school choice as someone who is looking to make a profit from taxpayer dollars with no government oversight by letting our students go to the best bid. Students are not a commodity. They are precious human beings with many needs whom we must nurture and educate as a whole, not differentiated based on wealth or social status. Please correct me if I am, if I am incorrect in defining your statement of support for school choice. Far too often and for too long, there has been an agenda to end or privatize public schools for either religious purposes, as the Protestants did in the 1920s, or racist ideologies in the 50s and 60s to keep children segregated, or economic reasons beginning in the 2000s with the standardized test and test prep material movement. But there has always been very little evidence to support school choice as being superior to public schools. Private and charter schools are not a better option for educating our population at large. Why? Because education is not a consumer product. It is a public good. We are not here to turn a profit off the backs of our overburdened taxpayers. We are not here to push the agenda of any group. We are here to teach all of the students in the standards set forth by the state of Ohio. Competition for students has failed miserably in this state and across the nation. Using standardized test scores as a gauge for success is ignorant. Using and criticizing the school's forward movement on equity and inclusion is reprehensible. Public schools are an integral part of a community's physical and intellectual infrastructure. We know that. You know that. Yet we have a board member who continually discredits our schools, who wants to disinvest in programs to support all of the students, and now wants to divert the public interest away from the public education." Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Meyer.
Thank you, board and community, for allowing me to speak today. I'm both a mother of, I'm both a teacher in the district and a mother of two children in the district. I am here today because of the misinformation that I continue to hear specifically in our community. Never in my almost two decades in the district has there been such a disdain for teachers and such divisiveness in the community. An even bigger blow is that while we are all trying to survive these pandemic years, this animosity is being perpetuated by one of our own board members. As a board member, one takes an oath that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as members of the Board of Education. As we have witnessed time and time again, impartiality is not part of this member's repertoire. Simply stated, impartiality means not being biased. He's publicly shown biased against transgender, CRT, Jedi, anything that can be turned controversial, even without the facts to back them up. He also shown bias in favor of public choice, religion in schools, and banning learning materials, which is not supporting teachers or educators. Why have teachers become the punching bag yet again? Is it because teachers work hard, aren't paid as much as those with similar educational backgrounds, don't have support from elected officials, constantly serve as punching bags for those who don't understand public education? Or is it just because it's easier to throw rocks at a house, a glass house, than to build one? This board member is simply not supporting public education. While there are numerous examples that I could reference, I will sum it up here. Public education is advantageous to our entire community. As an educated community, has less crime and less poverty, in turn, being safer and overall, a better community for us to live in. We need to accommodate all walks of life, every culture. We need to not reject students, but accept all students and their differences. It doesn't matter what their differences are. We cannot reject students, period, as teachers, as a community. We need to be considerate, tolerant, and accepting of others, no matter how very, how much they vary from us. We need to build the unity back in our community, and that needs to start with the top down.
Bill Boone.
So during my early academic career, I experienced the world's both private and public education. Uh, my parents decided for me to attend St. Adalbert's in Berea because they thought that was the best thing for me at the time. Go Blackhawks. Uh, when I transitioned to public schools in this district, my world expanded. Wow. So many different types of kids and teachers with so many different personalities and experiences. This is not a criticism of my time at St. Adalbert's. I learned so much and created lifelong friendships there. But I'm eternally grateful that my parents chose to send me to Reim and Berea High School. As with all teenagers, I had some bumpy times and made some horrible mistakes. I didn't love every teacher, and not every student interaction was pleasant. But overall, my positive feelings about my time in public schools far outweigh any negative feelings. I credit amazing teachers like Mr. Kroy, Coach Madsen, Ms. Baumhauer, Mrs. Fingston, Mr. Reynolds, among many others, for inspiring me to become an educator, and also lifelong friendships were developed as well. When I got the opportunity to teach in this district after college, I jumped at the chance. Been in the classroom 24 years. I still love every minute in the classroom with my students. I honestly could talk about American history with my students all day, every day. I love it. I see miracles happen every day in our high school, and I'm often humbled by the talent and commitment of my colleagues. Students teach me new things every day. But times have been tough the last couple of years. Pandemic has pushed teachers and students to the breaking point. It's been the most challenging time of my career, but I'm proud of the commitment of my fellow educators who made the shift from remote to hybrid to face-to-face with masks. At times, the obstacles seemed insurmountable. We did the best we could for our kids despite unprecedented expectations. One of the things that got me through these tough times was knowing that my community understood and supported us. So imagine my surprise when I see some of our community's elected leaders publicly advertising for private schools and condemning our neighborhood schools. My initial reaction was, our teachers are treading water right now, asking for help, and you just threw us an anvil. How do you trust a leader who doesn't have your back? Imagine Coach Stefanski of the Browns telling his players, hey, guys, I know we all had a tough year, but, you know, there's some other good teams out there. You could go to the Bengals, you could go to the Ravens, go to the Chiefs. They're great teams. Like, what? As a player, you might wonder, why is your leader reminding you how easy it is to join another team? In fact, you might ask yourself, why should I play for a leader who doesn't believe in our team? I encourage all teachers of our district to come to future board meetings and educate our community's elected leaders about all the truly awesome, inspiring things that are happening in our schools on a daily basis. You've got a little taste of it tonight. Just a little morsel. Don't let anyone tell the story of our schools for you. I know teachers are modest and generally don't like to toot their own horn, so to say, but I think current circumstances call for us to be more vocal. People outside the classroom have had the microphone for too long. It is time for teachers in the trenches to get off the sidelines and speak up for the teachers and students in our public schools. Thank you.
Jean Rebar.
Good evening. My name is Jean Rebar, and I'm an instructional coach in our district. I have spent over 40 years in public education in the Berea City Schools. I have spent over 40 years in public education in the Brea City Schools. I attended school here, I graduated from here, and I have worked here for over three decades. I am proud to say I am a product of the public school system and even prouder to be a product of this district. I consider it a privilege to work here. Until recently, I have always felt backed by and supported by all members of the community. And I have to say, it truly saddens me that all of the stakeholders in our district and community do not fully support our public schools. As board members, as it's been mentioned, I'm sure you're all aware of the Code of Ethics under the Ohio School Board Association, that your quote, "First and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of all students attending the public schools," which leaves me puzzled by recent comments regarding school choice and competition. Comments that are on the heels of misinformed perspectives on social-emotional learning, test scores, and course curriculum. And I fear that these comments are in fact out of touch with what is actually occurring in our classrooms as opposed to personal political ideology. These comments are severely misaligned with what is actually happening in our classrooms, not only with the board-adopted Ohio learning standards, but with what happens in the space between the standards and learning objectives. Not just the day-to-day lesson planning, but the never-ending supports that our teachers provide for our students. Traditionally, our public schools have been expected to fulfill certain public missions that go far beyond academics. Public schools are expected to provide universal access, guarantee opportunities for all children, unify diverse populations, prepare students for citizenship in a democracy and become self-sufficient and productive members of our community. All missions that seek to include all members of our community, a far cry from the exclusivity of a private educational setting, a path that promotes the exodus from our community as opposed to fostering both academic and economic growth within. There is no arguing that public schools must be accountable to its citizens, but citizens must also be accountable to public schools. In closing, I would like to stress the Ohio School Board Association's position on board member advocacy, one of quote, "Informing and persuading in favor of positions that benefit public education." Our ultimate goal is the success of our students. And the teachers in our district expect all members in our community to keep those goals at the forefront. I am a product of Brea City School District and I am a proud product of public education.
Gary Croy.
Good evening. My name's Gary Croy. I live in a school district and taught at Brea High School. Um, the class I taught was called "American Tradition." It was a team-taught course which merged the, um, US history along with the American Lit. Um, our goal was to provide, uh, materials that would open student minds and make our students critical thinkers and independent thinkers. Get them the knowledge that they could make good decisions based on the widest range of information available. Uh, we taught seven units. And our goal was to, again, get the, get a full spectrum of learning for them. Uh, when I took over the Advanced Placement class in 1985, I carried that philosophy with me of open-minded students. Uh, I'll give you an example. Uh, we did a political unit, uh, started out with Hamilton and Jefferson, and we brought it up to date with, uh, political thinking today. We invited speakers in. We invited a Republican. We invited a Democrat. We also invited a member of the John Birch Society and we invited a socialist. Okay, and each time we did that, we had a chance to discuss that information with the kids uh, in a small group sitting. We did a civil rights unit, five weeks long. And what I am most worried about now is this current nonsense that's going on about, uh, critical race theory. They, I often wonder right now, how many things would we have gotten phone calls on in the 60s, 70s, and 80s and 90s if this had been going on then? Uh, they are creating a, a, uh, solution that is in search of a problem. And they're running it out there to see if anybody bites. And unfortunately, many have bitten, all right? And almost every day in the paper or on the, in the news, you read about another school district banning a book, trying to manipulate curriculum, telling teachers what they can and what they cannot, uh, teach. I'm worried, and as a lover of history and somebody who's studied it for over 60 years and still am teaching it with BW's I L R program, I'm worried about the history classes being gutted. Uh, you can't be an AP teacher and teach a gutted curriculum. Let me tell you that because I did it for 10 years. Certain subjects are already being taken out of textbooks. Uh, you look at, I was on at least six textbook, uh, selection committees. And one of the things that I found out was that little by little, things that should be in the textbooks, uh, weren't there. I do want to sum up by saying, history is a collection of facts. Documented facts, proven facts, undeniable facts. What it is not is a collection of feel-good fairy tales. And I will tell you that George Washington did not chop down that cherry tree. Okay? I hope that this board and this administration will vigorously oppose the goals of these nonsense purveyors, uh, whose goal is not to open minds, but to get them narrowed at the most possible narrow point where they become easily manipulated and unthinking sheep. Thank you.
Dave Cecarelli.
All right, we're on today. All right, so I want to go back to the end of October when, at the Bree Methodist Church, when we had the candidates for school board up there and we had the pre-written questions, and I remember one of the candidates saying and talking about how they were very pro-social-emotional learning. So, social-emotional learning is a descendant of the self-esteem movement. The last educational fad in social, is the social-emotional learning. The term sold to the public school is "the whole child," including character and ethics education, incorporating psychological insights and group dynamics. So what's wrong with that? Well, in ParentsRightsAndEducation.org, we have five things that are some red flags. Substantive content of SEL programs and resources intrudes on personal and family privacy, making children vulnerable to psychological manipulation. Teachers conduct assessments of children's emotional and social development, a task for which they are not trained, qualified, using assessment tools unsupported by underlying research. SEL assessments are included in children's permanent school records with uncertain privacy safeguards. SEL curricula, resources, and assessments may touch on private or sensitive matters without parental notice or consent. Mission Creep diverts resource, time, and attention away from education and encourages schools to assert parental family responsibility towards the emotional development of children. So, let's say that social-emotional learning, there's a big old umbrella of it. Underneath, you're going to find things like critical race theory, equity, intersectionality, comprehensive sex education, changing of values, beliefs, and mindset. So, free speech in public schools does not apply in public schools the way that everybody does, thinks it does in American life. What I mean by that is, by teaching in public schools, it's not about giving kids access, access all available point of views all over the political spectrum. You have to pick and choose what you teach our kids because you have a limited amount of time. We have a designed curriculum that implements certain values. This is, there's no such thing as full value neutrality in schooling our kids. So the real question is, who gets to decide this? For the left, it's going to be the left. This is why we're such at odds. This is why, and we have every right to be pissed as parents. We have every right to transparent oversight of what is being taught to our kids. And we do it with the understanding that you're going to indoctrinate our, not indoctrinating our kids with a bunch of radical garbage. Thank you.
Mike Shannon.
Hello, y'all. This is my first time ever doing a speech like this. I just want to forgive you for the way I look. You know, I'm a blue collar dad. I know some of you on the scoreboard, uh, school board might forget what that might look like, you know? Um, I just want to say, I have four children. Two go to Cleveland. Two of them go to Cleveland Public Schools, two of them go to Brea, uh, City School District. Two that go to Cleveland City Schools don't have snow days. We have snow days. We rank 19th in Cuyahoga County, okay? Why are we having snow days? Get online, teach these kids, you know? End of story on that one. Uh, a lot of things have changed since I went to Brea City School District, you know? You all want to teach being, uh, politically correct. You know, when I went to school, there was no such thing. You let the parents teach that stuff. Why don't you guys just stick to A, B, C, 1, 2, 3? You know, you had their, your little, uh, girls thing there, but you have no thing for the boys. So as a man, as a white man, I can't sit here and cry about having to worry about raising my kids or being financially stable. But I got to treat it, but the girl will sit there and say, oh, that girl's a B this, or a whore, or anything like that. So where's the, where's it teaching a man that we can feel too? Go back to just teaching ABCs and 1, 2, 3s and all your history and all that. Get out of the political debate. Because that's all I got out of this thing. You had this group, you have that group, and you have this group. You know? I, I sailed for 19 years. I haven't been around my two oldest children for a long time. Now I'm trying to make up for lost time. And I come back to this kind of school district. My sister's graduated here, my parents graduated from here. My dad holds 19 letters and 20 sports. And you're gonna, you're gonna sit here and we're talking about critical race theory. We're talking about, oh, women need this group, but guys don't get a group. I have to go to bed every night thinking, how am I going to feed all four of my children? But, oh, I'm a white man, so you know what? Deal with it. You know? I just want to know, what are you doing for everybody? How about we stop separating everyone? Stop separating race or, or sexist and just join everyone together? What are we doing? How about we start a club where everyone is equal? You know, Dr. Martin Luther King once said, "I have a dream for my brothers and sisters." That, he wasn't just talking about black people. He was talking about humane, the whole race of, of people. Stop trying to separate people and join us together and go forward on that.
Great. Thank you to everyone who spoke this evening. Uh, now it's recommended the Board of Education enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or rules or state statutes. So moved. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Postal? Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Dokman?
Yes.
Mrs. Urquy?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you.